First of all, please stand. We'll have the invocation by Pastor Tennant.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, today we take a few moments to recognize you and thank you for your grace and mercy today. We thank you, Father, today as we gather here as leaders of our community, people of our community gather here. I speak peace over their heart and I speak the goodness of God into them. And as meetings are discussed today, things are discussed today, Father, I pray over them things. I pray that we would have the wisdom of God, that we be challenged in our heart to take you further and just do what is right in our community. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, please remain standing for pledge allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do the roll call.
Roll call, please.
Jason.
Jason.
Thank you.
Everybody's here.
Very good. Communications and announcements from board members. Does anybody have any communications? No? Okay.
I have a quick communication question. We scheduled a tour of the Tailored Family Clinic for any board members after the meeting. Is anybody, you don't have to go, but I want to email them and let them know if there are people interested. Is there anybody that would like to, or is it not something you want to do? You can schedule any time to go down there and see it.
So do you want a head call?
Yes. Is anybody interested? If not, I'll let them know not to wait for us. We had an open house. There were several people that showed up for that, so.
Those there already.
We're good? Okay.
Any other communications? Okay, we'll move on. Public comment. Anybody signed up for public comment? Please state your name and where you reside. If it's agenda item, you get three minutes. Non-agenda, two minutes.
Good morning. I am Tammy Hastings from the town of Eisenstein. My comments are regarding the resolution and proposal to engage in business with Bug Tussle or its parent companies. I am one of the cases that this company would consider unreachable with its product. I live a quarter mile through the Schwammigan National Forest, along the South Fork River. Our home is off-grid, running completely on solar power and occasional generator use. There isn't a power line in sight of my property, of my 40 acres. I have successfully used HughesNet as my internet provider since 2018. I livestream movies, upload and download music, videos and documents. I operate Hastings Concrete for my home without incident. We also plow and provide snow services for the hospital and the majority of the businesses on Highway 13 in Park Falls. The ability to monitor snowfall by viewing my cameras at my house in town is crucial. HughesNet sufficiently provides internet to monitor those cameras and provide Wi-Fi calling at my home. I have been in sales for 30 years. At no time has a sales pitch been about a contract, but rather about a product. I've sat through a town hall meeting and several county board meetings in which Bug Tussle has presented their proposal. At no time has there been a presentation about the must-have value of their services or product, but the necessity of Price County to benefit their company. I was also informed that there are 4,000 residents without service. I would assume that these are locations without fiber. And like many others, I intentionally purchased my 40 acres to be away from all of that. The Northwoods is a unique place in Wisconsin. Men go hunting or fishing and actually can truthfully tell their wives they may not have cell service. It's a place where people from larger cities go to get away from it all. About 75% of our concrete customers are transplants from the city who move into their vacation homes. These remote locations utilize Starlink or HughesNet successfully because it is a topic of our conversation. This deal is a slippery slope with minimal compensation to the county for their monumental investment. It doesn't provide equal opportunities to every township and every taxpayer. It is a business model that has not yet been observed, nor can it be successful as of yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment. Anybody online?
Star six, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Okay, nobody online. We'll move on. Next item is presentation. Laura Palskill.
Good morning. I'm pleased to share a number of employee milestone anniversaries with you guys this month. Anybody who is in the crowd, I see a few, I'd like to invite them to stand as they're recognized. So in July, employees who celebrated the service milestones are Stephanie Kotke, who is our child support specialist. She celebrated five years of service on July 17th. And then with 10 years of service in the month of July, we had Alicia Timmers, who is a social worker. She was July 7th. And Jennifer Miller, who is the Human Resources Manager, July 22nd. And then with 20 years of service in July, we have Joe Janik, who is a lieutenant with the Sheriff's Department and K-9 officer. And I didn't see him, but he had to point out to me, I've actually been there over 21 years, so noted Joe. And then in August, our anniversary is included with one year of service. We have Katie Newstrom, who's the Legal Secretary in the District Attorney's Office, August 24th. And Marilyn Rodriguez, who is a correction officer and civilian dispatcher, who will celebrate on August 30th. With five years of service in August, we have Sarah Soul, who's our Highway Department accountant, and her anniversary was August 16th. And then I have a question for you, and some of you are going to say I wasn't born yet. Do you remember where you were 45 years ago today? Somebody here does, and that person is Janet Kretsky, who is soon to retire, but today is her 45th work anniversary with the county, so. Congratulations to Janet on her long tenure with Price County and all the wonderful things she's done, and also on her retirement. So can we give a round of applause to all of our employees who have those milestones? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you all employees for your service. Next item, minutes from June 18th, 2024 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Let me catch up. Okay. Should be on your screen. Yep.
Motion moved by Hodeck, second by Dravnik. Any discussion? Everybody good, or is somebody still perusing? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to the ordinance that was forwarded to us from this morning's Highway Committee meeting. Ordinance reads 2024-04, an ordinance to amend the code of Price County by amending Chapter 473 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Article four, altering vehicles' routes to include 473.15 authorize the operation of a state highway bridge. Motion to approve. Spasic, second by Barackah. Any discussion? Larry, do you want to give us an overview, or is everybody good? Know what this is about?
I can give an overview on that. This has been on the docket for several years now. They came to us and the first time, we denied it. And they came back and the city had to get an ordinance together, which they did, to cross the bridge. And the next step was to come for a public hearing. We had one person this morning that spoke in favor of it. Nobody was against it, so the Highway Committee decided to support this. And now it's at county board, and we would support it at the board level also. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I have one quick one. What's the process going forward now, assuming this gets approved?
It has to go to the state, and the state will, however long it takes for them to get their act together, they will recommend the signage, and our commissioner said it could take weeks to months to do this.
Okay.
So as soon as the state okays it, then we can go ahead and sign it and open it up to the public.
Good. I think it's needed.
Yeah.
And this is why I read it, a trial for one year initially?
That was suggested by Jordan. We've been really involved in this in Ashland County, opening county trunk roads. And we did that with a one-year probation and talked to the Sheriff's Department up there and the Highway Commissioner, and he said there is virtually no trouble at all. He says they have way more trouble with snowmobiles than they do with ATVs and UTVs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just.
Go ahead.
I just know that in Hawkins, they actually opened up Highway 8 for the UTVs and everything to cross, so, I mean, and they haven't had issues.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
A motion carries 11 to 2 with a no from Copish and a no from Warko for ordinance number 2024-04.
Okay, now we're onto resolutions. First resolution is supporting state funding to establish a crisis facility to serve northern Wisconsin. Comes to us from the Health and Human Services Board. Motion by Hodeck, need a second. Second by Warko. Discussion on this resolution. Rep. Paula, do you want to give an overview?
I can do that. This came to us from the Taylor County County Board. And it's a resolution supporting state funding to establish a crisis facility to serve northern Wisconsin. So the comments that came of our meeting when we brought this to the Health and Human Services Board was that many facilities are posed that have supported the northern area. There has been an increase of individuals experiencing a mental health crisis, and they're being transported by law enforcement to the state facility Winnebago, which is a distance from Price County. This puts financial strain on countless counties and local municipal law enforcement agencies and stress on the individuals that are being transported for several hours. This resolution has no cost to Price County. And let's see what else was here. That's all I have right now. We have lost what we had before, so this is a good thing. If we can do this, if we can get them to realize we need to have something up here in the north to make it easier for our people who are not only transporting them, but the people that are having these issues.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Copish.
Sorry.
It's good.
Thank you.
Vote is 12 to 1 with a no from Hastings for resolution 20-24.
Okay. Next resolution, number two, approve revisions to the County Board Policy and Procedure Manual. Looking for a motion. Motion by Polacek, second by Hodeck. Discussion. Dennis or Nick, you want to give us a little overview?
Sure. There were several updates brought forward. There was one that didn't continue to move, but there's a couple in your packet that redlined that were to be considered. A lot of it comes down to, we've been having a bad order of meetings, I guess is a good way to put it. In April, after an election, what should be happening is you have your meeting where you sign in and get sworn in, and then you have a future meeting to set your committees. Because what's happening is we have a meeting, the board chair puts together the committees, and then we start to have committee meetings without official committees. So what this is setting up is saying, we'll have our organizational meeting. It'll be an educational meeting, a quick one, and then a week later, you guys will have another board meeting, which you guys will approve committee structure and have a regular board meeting. So it'll be like this type of board meeting a week later. The first meeting in April would just be your organizational part. So that would put us back into more of a, I don't want to say we're out of compliance, but a smoother transition to getting into the committee meetings. The other one was to set your guys' per diems. We've had problems of that in the past where if you know you're running for election, it's hard to say this is what it's worth to be on the board, because then you feel like citizens go, oh, the only reason you gave yourself a raise is you know you're running by yourself. So if you set them a year in advance, you forget about it, right? You say this is what it's worth to be doing it. This is what our budget will handle. And then you don't worry about it when the election comes.
Okay, any questions for Nick? Mr. Polacek.
Didn't we always set the wages for the incoming board?
Yeah, you'll still set them, but you'll set them a year earlier. So instead of setting them right before papers come out, so that's where it's difficult, right? Because then it's on your mind, it's on the voter's mind. Where if you set them a year in advance, it's not because you're running, you don't know who's going to run. You don't know what the incumbent's going to do or somebody that's going to run against you. So you set it and say, we believe that the value of helping your community and being on a board is X dollars. When the election comes, you're not setting that or not setting it to a market value.
But is it effective then for one more year of your term or for the next board?
It'll start with the next board. So like you guys set it for two years. So now you'll set it a year early, but it won't go into effect until the next election.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Copish.
Yeah, why is this an issue now?
We were just adjusting other things, so this was one that's come up in the past. We talked about it throughout the state. It's not necessarily an issue. It was just we were adjusting the two meetings, so this one was discussed also.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Hastings.
I think this has been on the agenda every meeting so far this term. The Supervisor Handbook and policy, it's costing us to keep going back to this. Is there a cap or something? How many times you can visit this in a year?
This is the First Amendment to it.
I think this is the First Amendment that we made this year.
I just thought of the last few meetings, we've brought this forward.
Well, it was a meeting that you're not on the committee that you attended that you heard that.
Okay.
Anybody else? No further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carries 12 to 1 with a no for Mr. Copish for resolution, why does my name always disappear? 21-24.
Next item, Resolution Three, Bridge and Culver Aid, Town of Elk. Been forwarded to us from the Executive Committee. This is just our routine, I don't know if that's the right term, our culvered aid package. Town of Elk is requesting.
A quick overview, yeah, a quick overview for how the Bridge and Culver Aid works is if a municipality participates in the Bridge and Culver Aid, we are the bank as the county to pay to get it done. So we're part of the engineering, we're part of the process. Once the complete project is done, we send a bill to the municipality that it's in, so Town of Elk will get a 50% bill, and the remaining 50% is collected from all the municipalities that participate in the Bridge and Culver Aid. And what it is, is a program to assist with the municipalities so that they don't have the burden of the high cost of the one-time fix of this. So the city of Park Falls, city of Phillips, village of Prentice doesn't participate. So their bridges and culverts don't count, but everybody else would see that. It's above and beyond our levy, so it's how many ever you guys approve to allow these municipalities to participate in the program gets distributed amongst those who participate in the program.
So that's basically overview of Resolution Three, Four and Five. We have a motion by Spasic and a second by Barackah to approve the one for the Town of Elk. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carries 13 to zero for Resolution 22-24.
Okay, next item is Resolution Four, Bridge and Culver Aid, Town of Lake. Motion from Erickson, second by Hallstrand. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carries 13 to zero for Resolution 23-24.
Okay. Next up, Resolution Five, Bridge and Culver Aid, Town of Wooster. Motion by Polacek, second by Dravnik. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion carries 13 to zero for Resolution, excuse me, 24-24.
Okay, the next item, the resolution part here. We have a closed session. Do we need a closed session, I guess is the question. That we need it if we want to discuss with our legal advisor who's online?
I would recommend we start with number six to have the discussion. We put this on here if it's needed to go into closed session, talk to legal. But really, it's number six is the discussion point.
Okay, we'll go to six, and then if we need to go to closed session after that, if there's questions that need to be held in closed session, we'll do that. So Resolution Six, final resolution regarding unconditional county guarantee of its pro-rata share intergovernmental agreement and taxable revenue bond financing for Bug Tussle II LLC project. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Warko. Is there a second? Second by Polacek. Okay, discussion. We've got legal online. Do you know who we have for legal? Is it Andy?
No, Ben's online. I don't know if Andy is. There's a couple callers. But I do know Ben is online, and he just unmuted, so he's available. We do have Bug Tussle here again. Scott is present in the room. So whatever questions you guys have, we can allocate to who may need to answer them.
I'll go ahead and open it up for discussion, and our questions for those folks that are here. No discussion? Been a pretty hot topic.
I missed last week, I'm sorry. Can you tell me how many counties you're interacting with on this currently?
You're talking to Scott from Bug Tussle?
Yes, yeah. Or how many other groups, I should say.
Certainly Supervisor. For this bonding issue, we are currently doing 10 counties, which includes Price County, for a total of, if all resolutions are passed, for a total of $109 million. The year before was 78, the year before that was 58, and the year before that was 92. And we did, our very first conduit bonding issue was done back in 2012, 2012 with Fond du Lac and Adams County.
Okay, and how many of these counties are, can you name the other counties you mind me asking?
I can try my best. We have Fond du Lac, Marathon, Price, Taylor, Jefferson. Iowa, thank you, who has ever said that. Thank you. Iowa, Lafayette. I'm not sure if I said Marathon.
I have the list here.
Thank you.
Waschera.
Waschera.
It's opening.
Okay, and my next question to that is, what is your success rate with these counties so far? Are we all on the same stage?
We have six county board meetings today on finals. I know that Fond du Lac is, will, and we know that Iowa will as well.
So there's Fond du Lac, Iowa, Price, Lafayette, Forest, Sawyer, Jefferson, Taylor, Marathon and Waschera.
Just three of you, those are the counties that are in this bond issuance.
Correct.
Potential counties, yes. I don't want to speak for them, because again, they all will make their own decisions, just like Price.
Mr. Barackah.
So to kind of go off of that, out of those counties that are in this bond issuance, how many of them are repeat? So you've done work in their, on similar projects?
If you go through, I can say yes or no.
Fond du Lac?
Yes.
Iowa?
Yes.
Price?
No.
Lafayette?
No.
Forest?
Yes.
Sawyer?
No.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Marathon?
Yes.
And Waschera?
Yes.
Mr. Copish?
Yeah. The number has changed from 250 million to 109?
No, how that all works is, from a conduit bonding standpoint, the Fond du Lac County has approved that bonding can be issued up to $250 million. And for this tranche or for this specific issue, there is, if all is passed, it would be for 109, which therefore would allow for an additional 141 to be issued at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a comment. Mr. Copish, did you get that question answered about the interest rate if it was folded into the 15 million? Okay, I know the answer, I just want to make sure you knew. Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Hastings.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the PME due diligence report. They say in the opening paragraph that says, unfortunately, at this time, we do not have actual performance information related to previous deals, and I'm not even sure why we're considering it if there's nothing that we can base this off of.
Scott, you want to address that?
And I think that Supervisor Hastings, I think that's an important concern that you can have and that the board should have. I think probably the most difficult part is that it's a 30-year issue and that we've done similar issues in both 2020, 2021 and 2022. And therefore, those 30 years have not gone through their full term. We did do a previous issue way back in 2012 that was for a shorter term, and that has been paid off in full with the 2012 Fond du Lac issue.
Any other questions? Discussion? Mr. Barackah?
Being at the meeting last week, a lot of good information, a lot of good conversation. A couple items out there that I think are worth talking about again is where we're at as a county with. A couple items out there that I think are worth talking about again is where we're at as a county with building that infrastructure out. So are we in a position that we're going to need to build this out? And if we don't do it now, what is that going to look like down the road? We have aging infrastructure at the sheriff's department, at the highway department. I think Nick can probably speak to dollars that we're talking about there, that we're going to be investing on leases and things like that, that would be taken care of by this. Looking at this, I hear a lot of comments in the community, invalid comments. How is this going to affect the end user? Okay, they're going to build these towers. We're going to take some fiscal responsibility if it fails, which has got to be a number of levels of failure before it does fail. How does this affect the the end user? Just like the interstate system. If you look at it as, I'm a road guy, so I look everything like roads. You look at the interstate system, interstate system brings the people to your community. The community branches off and connects the end users. That's the way I'm looking at this. So that being said, like I said, I think we, we're at the position, we have to start building infrastructure in this county. Another part of that, we talked about sheriff and and highway. I've also heard, back when I was commissioner, townships that wanted to get on our radio system because they don't have cell coverage. This would start to alleviate some of those concerns. Again, I think the decision, the thing we need to look at is where are we at with building our infrastructure? And what's the best way, the least financial way that we can invest in that? Because I think we do need to move forward at some point. Just my thoughts.
You brought up radios, sheriff's department. Sheriff's not here, but chief deputy is. Do you have any comments? Not to put you on the spot.
I guess as far as comments from the sheriff's office goes, regardless of your vote today, we are going to have to look at our aging radio system. Our portable radios are end of life. They don't make them anymore. Basically, we buy our spare parts off of eBay or Amazon for these radios. And in looking at this, this tower project could potentially assist us in covering the dead zones that we experience with our, with our portable. And and what I can say is, you know, when we are, you know, chasing a homicide suspect or a potential homicide suspect through the Schwammigan National Forest out by Mr. Hastings' residence, it'd be nice to be able to communicate with our our deputies as well as our dispatch center. So regardless of how you guys vote today, we are going to have to look at our tower project and radio project at the sheriff's office and for highway as well. And and I don't foresee our lease agreements where our current tower sites are, are going to stay at the same price that you guys are paying today. So.
Mr. Bracka?
One other quick question for you. To my understanding, the new radio systems that are coming out, not only are point-to-point, but they're also cellular-based, also correct?
That is correct. So I have a meeting this Friday with Motorola. They will be bringing up equipment to test the LTE radios that are also cell-based. Not only will they go off of our towers, but they are cell-based. And so on Friday, we'll be going out to see our typical problem areas to see how well that LTE will operate as is right now. If this tower project were to go through, I would have to anticipate that those LTE radios would work even, even better. But that, that, and the way they're explaining it to me is, like, when you have your cellphone out and you can't make a phone call, but you can send a text message, this radio is going to communicate just fine, plain as day, with the dispatch center. So that that's something that we have in the, in the future. We're looking at. My belief is it's going to be very expensive, but because I asked for a price and they're like, well, let's just test it first. So, you know, so I'll, I'll be able to tell you guys more after Friday afternoon, after we do that, that test of of these LTE radios. Is there anything else?
Just a comment, maybe a question, I guess. So if this would pass, this would help alleviate some of the expense of addition or new equipment? Like the towers we'd have to buy ourselves and install?
Correct. Our, our current tower here at the sheriff's office, we, we need to do something with that. And, you know, if this doesn't pass, then, you know, we do have to look at this central tower. Building one, I believe, in the shadow of the, the water tower out back and, and going from there. And then I, I think it would be wise for the county to start looking at north and south tower projects as well. I think Nick could probably.
Yeah, so the alleviation would come in a couple ways. One, we have a tower project that we've been discussing here in the, the central to increase the height. We wouldn't necessarily need that because there'd be additional towers to be jumping to and/or we'd have direct fiber to those towers. So you don't need to have line of sight. So we end up with twenty-four dark fiber to these towers, which would be us only. So we would be able to connect directly through the, the ground to the towers, which we don't necessarily have on some of our towers. The other area to alleviate is what Mr. Hunt's talking about was the additional location. So right now, we have one in Park Falls. I believe it's on the water tower. We have one down in southern Price County. Those are the repeaters, but it's all along Highway thirteen within, give or take some distance. What this will do will give us multiple locations, so we wouldn't have to look for something. And it won't be the same tower as you'd see, like centrally, like a big tall one. It would just be a tower in the Pike Lake area. With a tower there, there's an expense. You have a rental area or a lease that you'd have to find a property that someone would want to put it on. Or we would have to find somebody else who owns a tower and ask them to be on it. We need approximately forty feet of a tower, and we don't need the top end because that's usually where the cellphones go. That's the, the prime. We usually get the middle area. It's forty feet. Right now, I don't know how we're doing it, but thank goodness we are. The southern tower, I think, is nine hundred dollars a year. We're looking at other leases that would be more like a thousand to two thousand dollars a month. So where we're going to save is fifty thousand dollars a year if we wanted to go on four towers throughout the county. That wouldn't, we wouldn't have that cost. We would, we not only would have a rental cost, but you'd have the facilities on location. You'd still have to have a generator. You'd still have to have all the equipment. Now, we're saying, working with this, this project, we wouldn't have that, that cost of being on the tower. But we'd still have the cost of a building at the bottom of the tower.
And I think it's also important to note that this isn't just for the sheriff's office. This, this tower project essentially is for all of your emergency services within the county, your fire EMS as well.
Mr. Polczek, then I'll get you, Mr. Hastings.
If we vote to go ahead with this bonding today, how soon can we be up and running?
That, I don't know. We would definitely have to have another meeting with Northway. We already had one, I believe it was, was it last year? We had the meeting with Northway. We would have to find out from them, number one, how many towers we want to put county assets on. I would have to assume that they would probably do some type of study as far as the range of those repeaters that we would be putting on these towers and stuff like that. So I, I think it would.
Twenty-twenty, I would say if, if towers started going up as we go about two years. So we would, one, be working with Northway. We'd be waiting for, there's some towers that were already kind of set and ready to go with placement. But there's still more needed. But as they came online, it would really be a twenty-twenty-six project for funding, getting it up and running, which would be probably a year ahead of us doing something centrally. So if we had to do our own towers, just one tower, we're looking at two to three years because of environmental study. The permitting, because we're by an airport, the equipment, the build time. So we expedite getting stuff sooner, but it's also a much more robust project.
I was talking about if we sign on with Bug Tussel.
Oh, same timeline, because we'd be going with them. But if Scott, you want to.
Scott, you want to address that maybe?
Can, can we wait that long, Bob?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We would, typically, we have all towers constructed within a two-year time period. Sorry.
And I, and I think we could wait that long as far as our portables. So I, you know, I do believe we need to start having conversation about our portables and what we're going to do there. And, and I would say, knowing what we're going to do with Bug Tussel, I think would also help us in determine, are we going to go to the LTE portable radios? Or can we go with the eight thousands, which are not LTE? And will they work sufficiently with this new tower project?
And that's where we've been working with the sheriff's department is not necessarily stopping the project, but slowing it down to make sure we know what infrastructure we'll be working off of. Because if we started, our goal is by the end of next year is to get the funding for, to pay for twenty-twenty-six. So we'd be working on something end of next year to get the, the radios purchased. And that's just because of the timing, the planning, the what product. But if we move forward, if we would have moved forward six months ago and didn't know what our infrastructure looked at, we may not make the right decision. So that's kind of little dominos that all have to be put in place.
Mr. Hastings?
Can we make a motion to go into closed session about this, please? I didn't hear you.
We need a second? Okay.
I can't hear her.
She's got to put it together on the screen so we can vote. Okay. Ready to, heard the motion? Okay, motion by Hastings to go into closed session. Do we have a second? Second by Koppish? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. It's basic.
Just a question. I'd like to know what the exemption is and what, what it is we need to go on closed session for.
I have a lot of concerns, I guess.
I guess, well, well, let's discuss it now that we have a second. Yeah, so prefer discussion. So Jason, you want to answer?
I just said I have a lot of concerns, but I'd like to go over with our supervisors, no salesman present.
Well, that may not be a valid reason. We got to have a reason per state statute that this qualifies for. And just go in a closed session just because you don't want somebody to hear about it.
So you need, we need specifics. Mr. Hastings, do you have any specifics or what particular?
Yeah, that we're negotiating this deal, I guess. That's, that's a business deal.
I don't know how to answer that.
We, we have legal counsel online.
Andy, are you there? Or Ben?
I am. Thank you. And I would defer to your corporation counsel on implementation and interpretation of the open meetings law. But I will tell you this, that from the perspective of if it's a contract negotiation that nineteen point eight-five sub one sub E allows the county board to proceed in closed session, have discussions surrounding the county's position in relation to that contract or that potential contract, make sure that the county preserves its negotiation position. Whether the board believes that that's necessary for the closed session is, of course, up to the board. And that's, that's why you have the requirement that you go through the process of proceeding in closed session. But I do think that if the board wants to discuss its negotiation position in closed session, it can certainly do so.
Are we, are we to that point yet? Ms. Horek?
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure it's necessary to do that. This, this, this should be discussed unless we're doing something that we're going to be bringing somebody's name in or causing some undue arrest for something there. I, I think the public should be part of this.
Mr. Polczek?
Mr. Chairman, I don't view this as a negotiating session. I, it should be voted up or down. I think we're to that point. Because we pretty much know the dollars already.
Phil, I'll meet my opinion. I would agree with you.
Thank you.
I meant as a board, not just you specifically, but. So I guess the question is, do we even vote on this?
There's a motion and a second on the floor, so you would have to vote. The vote would be yes to go into closed session or no to not go into closed session.
I think we're at the point to vote then, unless there's any further comments.
Exemption would be one E. Okay.
Are you ready?
I believe so.
Motion fails eleven, one to twelve with a yes vote from Mr. Hastings.
Okay.
Then I have a question.
Mr. Hastings?
Yes, I'm questioning the legal terminology for a business model where you can reuse the same collateral for different debts. Because I can't do that. This is illegal where I bank.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I address?
Go ahead. Yes, please do. This is Andy, right?
It is, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't view it as cross-collateralizing and providing additional collateral. Because I, I just want to make this clear. The infrastructure that's going in, based upon the documents we've reviewed, is not subject to a security interest by the bondholders. So the investors who are providing the money, purchasing the bonds, providing the money so that Bug Tussel can develop the project, they are not getting a security interest in the infrastructure. Price County is getting a pro rata share of a security interest in that infrastructure. And the pro rata share is defined as the infrastructure in Price County is being collateralized for purposes of securing Price County's guarantee. And if you look at the way that Bug Tussel has created the project, the first Bug Tussel project was under Bug Tussel one. This project is under Bug Tussel two. Among other reasons, the reason they do that is to make sure that there is no cross-collateralization. And so I don't, I don't believe that we have a situation where we have several different mortgagees, if you will, people receiving the mortgage on the infrastructure. We have one mortgagie and that's Price County. I do know that there is, there are layers to the Hilbert guarantee, of course, the parent guarantee as it relates to the first project and the second project and so on. But that's not, that doesn't have to do with the security interest granted and the collateral, that being the infrastructure. So I, unless Ben is telling me I'm completely wrong on, on the documents, that's my understanding is that there is cross-collateralization on the infrastructure.
No, that's right, Andy. The projects are completely separate, other than the Hilbert guarantee, which, of course, he said isn't, doesn't have anything to do with the actual collateral and the infrastructure itself.
Ben, can you take two seconds and introduce yourself? We haven't heard from you yet.
Yeah, sorry. I'm Andy's partner, Adetolus, representing the county in this matter.
And you're not on camera, Ben, because you didn't shower today? Is that why?
I was on camera before. I'm back now. There you go.
Does anybody else have any questions for legal or any, any question period? Mr. Hallstrand was, raised his hand earlier, so I'll give it to you.
I'm very patient. So we've had a lot of really good discussions here on this today. And, and I think there's been some, some good points that have been brought up. The benefit to the county is, is more than, to address the speaker earlier, more than providing another wireless provider. Because we all know that there are wireless providers out there, and if you're happy with your wireless provider, great. If we'd like to create some options, this project will do that. But what it will really do is bring, bring a little infrastructure to the county as far as the capability for more cellular coverage within the county for, for our tourism, for our residents. It brings emergency services capabilities that, that we know we're going to have to address. The second part of the speaker's concern was the cost of the county. And barring the project failing and all three fail safes failing, the cost is zero. We actually will gain a million dollars out of this on the basis points that we will get paid by Bug Tussel for being a cosigner. So that it's a positive financial to us, unless the project fails. At that point, then we own the infrastructure. But we will also be getting the lease money then from the cell companies and, and all the infrastructure that goes along with that. So, I mean, it's, it's more than just a Bug Tussel wireless provider coming into town and people don't like them. I could, I could present. I could, I could present arguments that people don't like all their wireless providers, you know, but we still need them. And, and thank goodness, we live in America, we have choices, and we can choose to provide. Um subscribe to service from somebody or not to subscribe from somebody. If you don't want to, you don't have to, living off the grid, that's a, that's a personal choice and, and we can do that here. So but our job, I guess, is to look at what's best for everybody in the county. And are we doing anything that can help all the people in the county? And this is a threefold project, it's cellular, it's, it's providing another wireless provider, and it's our emergency services. And I think the, the risk factor has to be there if this fails completely. Bug Tussle two fails, nine other counties fail, Hilbert Communications fails. And wherever this insurance policy is that's behind this backing the bond fails. So I, I think this is really a win-win. I brought it up at, at the last meeting that Taylor County has, has entered into an agreement with Bug Tussle a couple of years ago. And they put up twenty million dollars as their share. So they actually spent taxpayer dollars to do what we're doing for just the risk of our signature. So I, I think this is, we, we have an opportunity to provide that same infrastructure they did. The other thing is in the pro, pro rata form, we don't have a good history. Well, if six of these other counties that Bug Tussle two is now presenting to are, are entertaining the idea of doing business with them again, it must be working. We can make somewhat of an assumption there, but I, I think from my own personal feeling, it's a good project to. To, to provide to our citizens at really zero cost. I mean, there, undoubtedly, there will be some costs associated, we talked a little bit about generators and, and different things at the sites that. You know, the cost we're gonna have anyway to provide service. But, but I think this is a, as Mr. Baraka put it, a stepping stone, a good foundation. We're building some infrastructure that we can build on further down the road, thank you.
Mr. Koppish.
On the towers, there're gonna be a hundred fifty foot towers. And I think if I'm correct, on last Tuesday, I heard that the top fifty feet is gonna be reserved for whoever and not the county. So are we talking about our stuff going on at a hundred feet? And you said a forty foot distance, is it forty feet, a hundred feet down to sixty feet?
So our stuff would start at sixty and the whip towers would go up forty feet of that.
So we're at a hundred feet or, or lower?
Antennas, yeah, well, we're, we're, yeah, we're between sixty and a hundred feet above.
I've got trees in my yard that are called in a hundred feet, I, I, that doesn't seem like a very good height for what we're talking about. Maybe, maybe this communication can operate at that distance, at sixty feet up to a hundred, I don't know.
Yeah, and you gotta remember they're also on high points, so like.
Yeah.
You have trees that are that high, but if you start from point A at a thousand feet, your house. Correct, so there, there's, oh Jeff knows more about topography there.
I, I would just like to ask the Bug Tussle rep if they are a hundred and fifty foot or they're three hundred foot towers. I believe they're three hundred foot towers.
I keep hearing a hundred fifty, so.
I, I believe they're three hundred. Right, we go much higher, uh we, it's a three hundred foot tower, three hundred guide, guides wire tower.
Ours is a hundred and fifty out here, outside our.
Who's missing?
I think we're back online.
Should just bring you back where you, where you were.
I have unmuted the room, so we'll, we'll see if anybody comments.
Paul and Michelle are in the hallway, oh, Michelle, you're back.
Hold on one second, I wanna verify.
It was Joe's that was, sorry.
Okay, they can see or hear us, they can now see us. Ben's still there, we lost Andy, we got about seven people online, so if we wanna give it thirty seconds, I think we'll be. Should be back up and ready to go.
Okay, we'll bring this meeting back in session. Further discussion on resolution number six.
Can I keep finish where I was?
Absolutely.
If I remember where I was.
Uh you had started with a three hundred foot tower.
Well, that, yeah, that was that, that, I think we got that taken care of, but I'm gonna go back to something I questioned, I think last time or time before. Uh in the notice to the electors, there's a statement that says the bond shall never constitute an indebtedness of Price County. And then, under the guarantee agreement, it says Price County's guarantee will apply only in the event that the company fails to make the required payments due on the bonds. Something doesn't connect with me on that, how do you say never when there apparently is a chance that it could happen?
And if Andy is on or if Ben is on, they have the better legal description because.
I'd love to hear it.
Because from my understanding, is it the bond, Andy, if Andy's on, there we go.
Okay, you did a great job of getting out of that one.
I am not a lawyer, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn, so.
All right, Ben, it's your turn.
Thanks, yeah, we can answer that question. Um so Fond du Lac County is issuing the bonds on behalf of Bug Tussle and loaning the money to Bug Tussle. The sole obligation to repay the bonds is on Bug Tussle. Under the document structure, there is a debt service reserve fund. And so that's basically if Bug Tussle is unable to and doesn't pay um the debt due on the bonds. That debt service reserve fund is drawn upon. If that debt service reserve fund is drawn upon and then, you know, say Bug Tussle within a month. Or I, I can't remember the exact time under the document, so it's approximately thirty days, I think. Uh can't replenish that debt service reserve fund on its own, that's when the county guarantee would kick in. So the county guarantee is the county's uh general obligation, full faith and credit pledge of that debt service reserve fund. Not the actual bonds themselves, um and that's. I guess structured that way to insulate the counties a bit, cause you're only guaranteeing your pro rata share. That's applicable to that debt service reserve fund, so you're not guaranteeing the bonds themselves, you're guaranteeing that this reserve fund will be replenished. Um and then, just to continue on that, uh. As you, as you know from the documents, uh if the county is required to make, go down its guarantee and refill that debt service reserve fund. It's only going to be to get it back to the level it's supposed to be at, so that's not the full, you know, fifteen million at one time. Um it's a much smaller amount, and at that point too, then Bug Tussle and its parent Hilbert have the obligation to reimburse the county.
When they couldn't make the payment in the first place.
Well, that's if Bug Tussle couldn't make the payment from project revenues. Uh Hilbert as a parent obviously has other assets that it's backing up its guarantee of the county with. So that, so Hilbert isn't guaranteeing the bonds, it's guaranteeing the counties.
Yeah, so that statement you don't think is misleading, will never be an obligation?
It's legally correct.
That, that, that is, that isn't what I asked.
Yeah, I don't, I, I guess I can't say if it's misleading, I mean, from a, from a legal standpoint, it's not misleading at all. Um the, these are just complicated issues under the statutes.
Yeah.
Um so I mean, I, I don't think it's misleading because. Price County is not an obligor of the bonds. There's gonna be, you know, if, if all the counties uh participate and there's a hundred nine million dollar, uh hundred nine million dollars of bonds issued and outstanding. Price County is never guaranteed or is never required. To pay that amount on the bonds, it's only guaranteeing that debt service reserve fund up to a certain amount. Um so it's, yes, indirectly, in a way, you're guaranteeing a part from the bonds, but not, but legally, no. You're only guaranteeing that debt service reserve fund, uh which insulates the county more than guaranteeing the bonds themselves, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I heard what you said. But sort of everybody else, so everybody understands what's there. Last thing, I guess, is, is I'm up in the north and I've had discussions with constituents and there's an expectation here. And, and what's gonna happen and what kind of service is gonna be provided. And I'm just uh concerned that we're not gonna see it up north. And we're gonna, I'm gonna have disappointed constituents and that, that concerns me. Cause I need to represent them properly, so that's, that's a concern I have.
It's an absolutely valid concern supervisor, and I can understand why you would have that concern. Uh I'll, I'll do two, two responses to that. First and foremost is that, again, this is the first of what we would hope to be a long, a long lasting. And a multi-year type of partnership with Bug Tussle that while we're doing these towers and this fiber right now. We would intend and would like to do more. And so with any project, whether that is road maintenance or, or the like, there's always someone that's gonna be first. And someone that's gonna have to wait their turn. And so while that isn't necessarily nice for those that have to wait their turn. Uh there is the feeling that we want to serve the entire county. Um that, so in that respect, there is that part. Uh the other part is, while I understand as supervisors, you all represent your districts individually. I also know that as supervisors, that you, having served on a county board myself, that part of, part of the responsibility is to. Is to represent your district, but is also to try to do what you feel is in the best interest of the county as a whole. And so you will have to ask yourselves whether you believe that this project benefits the county as a whole. Even if it does not benefit your individual districts.
Can you, with the towers, so there's two in the north, there's two different products we've been talking about. One would be the wireless internet and then one would be cellphone, do you have like an average crow for, as the crow flies distance? Because I think that's misleading too, is some of the, it looks like there's not a lot of coverage, but there is. The reason they were placed there is it covers quite a bit of the uncovered area.
Correct, we, what we tried to do when we were, when we were looking at designing. Correct. We, what we tried to do when we were, when we were looking at designing where the towers would go is we were trying to identify areas that have less coverage and therefore put that there, at least from a wireless standpoint, I don't, I don't want to speak for cellular, but from a wireless standpoint, depending on where the tower is, what type of equipment, we safely say three miles, but we can go six or more. Depending on what the equipment is, as well as what the topography is.
I just want to address this. It's on.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to address what Scott was saying that, but Mitch said in the last meeting that they do want to add more to this and Mitch said ten million extra dollars, so this is a twenty-five million dollar deal, it's not just a fifty, and they want more to get everybody. Just wanted to, all the supervisors that were not present at that meeting to be aware of that.
Well, if, if I may respond, is, you're absolutely correct Supervisor Hastings. In the respect that if the amount of towers and fiber is not going to provide one hundred percent coverage to the entire county. As we have done with numerous counties, whether it's Iowa County, Fond du Lac County, Washeira County, more towers will need to be built, more fiber will need to be put in. And as you are probably well aware, you have thousands of under and unserved locations within your county. To provide that type of service, a fifteen million dollar project would not be sufficient to provide internet service to all the locations within your county. That is just a, a, a fact. But what we can do is we can start down that road, we can start that process. And that is part of the design that we put forward for your consideration.
Mr. Bracken.
One question, then a comment. On the end user side of it, so you're going to have a three hundred foot tower, to my understanding, you're going to have four for layman's turd plugins for providers to put towers or put their equipment on your tower. The two major providers, I guess, I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but is AT&amp;T and Verizon. So if AT&amp;T throws a tower or a system up on your tower, I guess, two sides of it, do you see that both those companies or both providers that are in an area utilize your tower? Or is it typically one that does? And does that provider typically open that access for other people to go off of that if they're not part of their system?
I, I don't want to speak for AT&amp;T, Verizon, or T-Mobile. U.S. Cellular is about to be bought by T-Mobile or merged. But what has typ, what we've seen typically is that you'll have a carrier that will come out up on our towers and start to provide service as to whether a rival carrier is willing to then go into that market area. That is up to that, that other company. And again, to be completely honest, we have at times where you are going to have those cellular providers that want to build their own tower. So I'm not going to tell you that if we put up a tower that you're going to have T-Mobile and Verizon and AT&amp;T all serving on this tower, because then I would be misleading you. We do have an agreement with AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T is on a number of our towers throughout Wisconsin and, and Iowa. But I don't want to specifically say that all towers will have AT&amp;T because that is a business decision of AT&amp;T, they will look at the market and be able to determine what towers, if any, they want to locate upon. But we have a good track record of having AT&amp;T come onto our towers.
Right, and, and I understand that's a very broad view, but I guess what I'm asking is, do you have data or do you have an opinion? So obviously, each provider has their own towers also. But in an area where a provider does not have a tower, do you see competitors putting their equipment on your towers to fill that void where they don't have, do you have data supporting that, that the end user side of it for Price County where people are saying, how is it going to affect me? Somebody throws up a tower, I can't use that tower because I got a different service.
I don't have the exact data, but I can tell you that, that we have of the three hundred and seventy, three hundred and eighty sites that we have throughout Wisconsin, that we have AT&amp;T on a large number of those towers. As for will, and we do have other carriers as well, but predominantly AT&amp;T. As for whether those carriers want to then come onto a tower where, let's say, AT&amp;T is already on, I think what it really comes down to is what is the rent that is going to be charged? And therefore, does the going into that market area and strengthening that service, is that worth the monthly cost of the equipment up on that tower? And they make that business decision.
Just quickly, I have one more question for you and then I'll get to the comment, but is the rent for that site the same for all? Or do you have individual contract agreements, dollar wise?
Every single carrier, it's a, it's a separate agreement, but for the most part, they're, they're typically within a range. So it all depends on what type of equipment they're putting on, how big it is, those types of things. But typically, when we're talking about tower, tower rental agreements, you are right that, that it is typically within a, a range, an industry range. I know that the deputy, chief deputy was talking about nine hundred dollars a year as rent for the tower. If you can keep, if you can renew that, take it for as long as you can. Because as said before, we also rent some of our equipment up on other towers that are not our own. And you're talking, usually, at the minimum, you're talking two thousand dollars a month, at minimum.
Good, thank you. And then just my comment, kind of to Bob's point, which was a valid point, that there probably is going to be another provider that's going to move into this area eventually. We've been there for a number of years trying to get the, the infrastructure in place. And what does that agreement look like if that comes? In this case, we're going to gain some, some benefit from this. So looking at, looking at it as an investment with any investment, you take risks to get, gain. So that's just my point to Bob's comment there, when he talked about future projects coming in possibly. Thanks.
Any other question?
Okay, so out of the ten towers that you're proposing, right, I guess is the way to say it. Do we have a say in what would take precedence or what, or how the builds are going to go? Like, obviously, if we need coverage up in the north because we're worried about the communications, I mean, are those going to go first? So if something were to fall, that you'd at least have the towers in the area that you want? As opposed to a bunch around Solberg?
Yeah, and I, originally when you started the question, I thought, how did we come up with this? We worked with Bug Tussle, say, here, well, they look at the maps and say, here's your hotspots, here's your cold spots. Here's where we recommend. We talked a lot about, hey, we really would like to see this area covered, this is where we're hearing the problems. As far as dictating
We could accommodate.
The bill saying, hey, we really want to see this area started first. All would depend on construction schedules, but
Correct, and, but typically, since if, if we're going to be doing these projects and putting up towers for the most part, you always wanted to, construction within as close and knit an area as possible, so we would be thinking Price County is kind of one bigger construction area, so if there were some preferences that the county wanted as to which towers might be put up first and therefore would more likely become live first, I think that's something that we can accommodate.
And then I guess this is more for you, Nick, because, well, I have only been here a few months, so. I mean, I've only heard about Bug Tussle. Was there ever anybody else in the game? Did we do diligence and try to find anybody else to do a bit as well, or?
Yep, so we were approached by Bug Tussle, I think, two thousand nineteen-ish for the first tranche, we decided not to do it. Since then, we had no one reach out to us saying, we're a tower company, we want to come in. We have worked with other telcos, Norvado for fiber. We worked with, it used to be Charter, West Spectrum, west of Butternut, that didn't come to fruition. We worked with one other telco down south that, so we've worked with telcos, not necessarily on tower projects. And we just haven't had anybody knocking down the door saying, hey, we, this is a game changer project, how would you like to handle it?
Okay, and then now I'm back to you, sorry. So Taylor County, you said that they're kind of on the list again?
Yes.
Have you done anything in Taylor County?
I know that we have towers in Taylor County, but again, I believe that since we've done towers in Taylor County, that this would be our second kind of go around with them.
Yeah, and I was on a meeting, I can't, it's Bug, Doug, Bug, what's the Taylor County board member? That's, it's not Bob, he had a nickname.
His bub? Yeah, bub, Mike bub.
Bob, I knew it was, so, we had a, we had several meetings with counties that are participating in this, this ten. And Bob from Taylor County gave a little spiel about how they had done their original project. They had funded it because they knew they wanted infrastructure, it was a loop. And the reason they're going with another project is they had, they had additional stuff they want to do. This wasn't a, oh, we fell short on the first project, this was, we appreciate what's happened with the original project, giving access via tower and/or the, the line. And they wanted to expand that project and that's what that five million dollars is for them, so. That's why Taylor County's going in again, it's worked for them, the first project, and they're excited to expand it.
Any more discussion? Mr. Hastings.
What are the conditions on the sale of Hilbert? Within our thirty-year contract?
I don't know that Hilbert is for sale Supervisor Hastings, so I'm not sure what the question is.
What would happen for our contract?
Again, I would, I would have an attorney talk about that, but if there are legal contracts with Hilbert Communications with another party, anyone that would therefore purchase Hilbert Communications would therefore be, what do I, what's the word I want to say, they're required, obligated to fulfill those, those contracts. Because that's true in almost any contract.
Andy addressed that last time, and I know Ben's still on, if you want to address contracts and how that would go if, if there is change of ownership. See if you, there he goes.
Yep, and I'm just playing up the Hilbert guarantee, but I believe what would happen is that any successor entity to Hilbert would assume Hilbert's guarantee obligation under the guarantee, I'm just looking for the exact language in the contract right now. Yeah, there's specific language in the guarantee that the obligation would transfer to any successor entity.
Thank you.
So no guarantee?
No, he just said there is a guarantee.
No, the guarantee would continue just with the new, with the purchaser, if you will.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Hastings?
I did some research and I found that Frontier Communications, a wireless company, got sued for their internet speeds. And they were not what they were advertising and they lost everything. They were able to rebuild their business and now has a class action suit against them for a cyber data breach. I believe this deal with Bug Tussle is extremely, extremely risky. They're treading into uncharted territory up here in the trees where I believe this is an unsolvable problem for tower communications. FYI.
I'm not sure, is that a question?
No, it's FYI.
Okay.
Anybody else? One more time, anybody else have comments, questions?
I do got one more.
Okay.
What do I tell my constituents about Jeff Hallstrand's tower in this conflict of interest?
I mean, it's been vetted, it's not a conflict of interest.
How is it not? We're getting paid.
No, he, you know.
So, so if I can address this, we, we called, we called our attorney about it. He said there's no conflict of interest. My contract to put a tower on my property was done before Bug Tussle's presentation to the county. All right, so then we called the county, we, I believe we talked, did we talk to Andy as well? Or who did we?
We talked, when we were in the room, it was Brian,
I was there too.
Jeff, myself.
It was a concern of mine.
Yeah, you should absolutely abstain from voting on this.
According to our legal counsel.
According to them, I absolutely do not have to abstain from voting on it.
So the reasoning, the reasoning behind it is there's not a, if this were to fail, there's not a loss of funds or a gain of funds if it were to pass, so.
I just know I abstained. Jordan's abstained because of the money issues?
Yep, and this, we did vet it, we, we got our legal involved to, to vet that.
And I did abstain from previous ones when we were giving money to a company that I was working for. So, and, and I was concerned about this. There's, and, and this is actually for, they're going to operate ten sites in Price County. Two of them are already done, all right, in their eyes, but there's no tower built on my property. But the one in Catawba is done and up, the power's there, the lights are on it. They're ready to talk to Taylor County. This down here was part of a Taylor County project that they were looking to cover that portion of Taylor County out of here as well. So this was signed, that was already installed before this project came. They're going to operate ten towers in Price County. Eight on this project.
Wasn't it originally thirteen at that town hall meeting?
In the first tranche, when we turned it down in two thousand nineteen, it was more towers.
Yeah, and we reduced it because of the cost, so the board didn't have an appetite at that time for that cost, so it was asked to be reduced to this number, and that's where the additional future, if you guys want to continue building it out, would be the second ask. There's nothing on the slate, there's no calendar saying, oh, in two years, ask for it. It was asked for like I said in two thousand nineteen or twenty, at, I think it was twelve or thirteen towers. The board did not feel comfortable with that size of project, so Bug Tussle came back with this project instead.
I'm saying six months ago is thirteen towers. At that town hall meeting, no?
No.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
I got more, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just got muddied water for myself, so the tower in Catawba is Bug Tussle's as part of a Taylor County project?
It was built under Bug Tussle one project.
So then are we going to get billed somehow for that tower, or is that one just off and then that one doesn't matter anymore?
Do you want to address that?
The, the Catawba that you saw in there is to put additional equipment onto the Catawba tower, so the project would include equipment, additional equipment on the Catawba tower, not the construction of the Catawba tower.
So how much stuff goes on the tower, I guess, then now I'm?
So when we're talking about equipment, and again, when you're talking about microwaves and radio and the like, it all depends on where you're positioning the equipment, because if you just put something on a tower, it doesn't necessarily put out signals in a three sixty, three hundred and sixty degree type of fashion. So therefore, depending on where you're putting your equipment, what type of equipment, it goes into certain directions and therefore helps to serve certain areas.
Mr. Hallstrand.
And I do believe, I wish Mitch was on the call, that he could explain, but I, I believe part of that Cannon Catawba was on that fiber that they plan, intend on plowing out towards West County. They're going to do fiber to the home as part of this project in the villages of Cannon and Catawba. That's going to come out of the equipment at the Catawba site. So there was, I don't remember the numbers that he gave us. It was at one of our informational meetings, he actually explained that, that there was like a hundred and fifty-three homes that we're going to get fiber drops as part of this project.
Anybody else?
I personally had a community development loan with a private entity, and this is the same exact situation, this is a private entity. They say that they'll come up with an open records request, but they don't have to. It's a bad idea to consider this, it's. They say that they'll come up with an open records request, but they don't have to, it's a bad idea to consider this, it's. They can deny it. I think everything should be public within the county business dealings. FYI.
Any further discussion? Here, let's vote.
Before you reveal or ask one, because this is a bonding. Well, while she's working on, just, uh, the voting is, it's not a simple majority, because it's a bonding situation. It's three fourths of the whole, uh, that means three noes, it passes, four noes, it fails.
The options are yes, no, and abstain, in case you're wondering.
In case anybody online is wondering, we're having another technical issue. All votes are in?
Yes. Motion carries eleven to two with no's from Hastings and Kopisch. Motion carries, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, appointments, Council on Aging Advisory Committee, term to expire four thirty twenty twenty-seven. Anybody on the board want to give us an overview of what this is?
Did we, we, I know at the.
Don't have a candidate, so we can just pass by that.
Health and Human Services Board was still working on this candidate, there was discussion. Right now, we try to get one from the north, central and south to, for coverage, we're struggling to get one, I believe it's from the south.
No, from the north.
From the north, okay, I can remember.
Yep, and, and at the meeting, if I may say, and at the meeting, I, I had posed the question, because we have discussed this before with the lack of representation from the north. Um, and, and I, and I don't want to not have representat- representation from the north, but I still also want to have a full committee if we can, so. The question being, do we take someone from the central or south to fill that? Well, then Mr. Kopisch popped up and said, you know, I think I'm going to look a little bit longer, so we're going to wait till the next meeting to discuss this. I might have a couple options, but they would be central and I really would like to get someone from the north, I think the committee would like that as well.
They have to fit a certain criteria, or we've met that on the board?
We, we've already met it, yeah.
That's always, you have to have so many individuals of age, so much individuals of a certain demographic.
Right.
We've hit those, so now it's, we just need a representative.
A voice, yeah, and, and it's four meetings a year. So if anybody from the north is listening.
We'll move on then, um. Does anybody want to take a break, or should we keep moving?
I don't know, you might lose me if I, if I'm on, if I'm on the loose.
Committee of the whole, board chair report. Okay, um, since the last meeting, I went to the Northwest Regional Planning Annual Meeting. There they had the routine election of officers, uh, introduced members and new members. Uh, discussed electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. And, uh, it was just good to go and get them, uh, meet other board members. Or planning members, I'm sorry, Northwest Regional Planning Members. Um, also went to Park Falls Area Community Development Court meeting on six twenty. Uh, usually Alan goes to that, but I went there to cover for him, we talked about going down to Park Falls and including a sixty unit housing complex that looks like it's going to go through. Sixty.
Is that going up on the north side?
I have no idea.
It's, yes, that's correct, behind like the old Pritzl Beverage or whatever's.
Behind where, did you say?
Where it used to be Pritzl Beverage, I don't know what it's called now, it's a.
It's like a automotive place.
Automotive repair shop now.
Between thirteen and Tower, behind Sam's old house.
Uh, also at that meeting, there was, everybody that was there, gave updates in their particular area, like Park Falls, Phillips, Brennis. I gave a little update on what we're doing down here, uh, brought up Buck Tussel and so forth. Um, went to a WCA Chair Seminar, uh, basically on how to run meetings, so. Somewhat professional, hopefully. And then, uh. I'm going to go to the Fall Conference, that's at the end of September, and then just doing the day to, day to day activities and a lot of Buck Tussel stuff. But we're moving forward with that. So that ends my report, County Administrator's Report.
Alright, everybody strap in for the next what hour?
Maybe I should ask if there's any question for me first.
You sure you don't want to break? No. Any questions for Brian?
Good, okay, go ahead Nick.
Uh, Executive Report, it should be in your packet, it's the one with the logo on it. Uh, page two is, we're fifty-eight percent through the year, we've collect, or we spent fifty-six percent of our expected expenditures. And we've collected seventy-one percent of our expected revenue. Uh, nothing's jumping out, uh, through the year, uh, that, that we've discussed so far. Uh, Health and Human Services, they're at fifty-eight percent of their budget through fifty-eight percent of the year. We've collected sixty-three point nine-nine percent of our revenues, expected revenues. Uh, we are working on some things through the budget process, uh, with Health and Human Services. We continue, which you'll see in a second, to be low on high cost placements for youth. Uh, but part of that is we've reallocated some of those placements to the AODA Mental Health, which was, they were always grouped into one, we're now grouping them where they should be because they're under the Behavioral Health. Uh, we're going to do some adjustments for next year's budget, however, we're not going to adjust all the way. Um, the reason Sarah's not here today is she's attending a conference about how mental health and the AODA, uh, C, CSS, CTS, all the funding comes in. Uh, we believe we're missing out on some of that reimbursable funding, so, uh. Between Carrie and I and Sarah and the other Carrie, normal building Carrie, we've all kind of discussed. So you'll see that in our budget, we've made adjustments, but not maybe as far as would cover what you think needs to be covered. Other funds, uh, animal control, veteran service, airports, everything seems to be coming, coming in okay. Uh, again, nothing's jumping out, we haven't had any major, um, animal control issues. We haven't had any major things at the airport or at highway. Uh, Price County's cash, we're a little bit lower than we were last year at this time, we're ten percent lower. Ultimately, that comes down to projects where we, if you see since March, so April, May, June, we've, we've been that ten percent, actually less, um, or more throughout the year. Uh, and that comes down to, we've been paying off our projects that you guys approved through ARPA or other large, large projects. The, we're also not seeing a ton of money come in through stumpage like we do at this time of year, so that puts us behind by probably five of that percentage.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Coach.
Um, how much do we have, uh, much ARPA money left?
Yeah, we're, we did about half of it.
So that means we got a million three left?
Well, more than that, we started with four.
Oh, four?
Yeah, four point two and.
Thought it was two point six, okay, four.
Was it? Yeah, four, okay.
Two point six is.
He scared me for.
So, so don't we have to have that spent or committed by the end of this year?
So Carrie's saying we, we, we've gotten conflicting information and this is not wrong or right yet, we're working on it. So we have to have four point six million dollars allocated by the end of this year. And what their allocation means is contracts in hand, so saying that they're going to be doing a project. Through my network, um, my understanding is we don't have to have those contracts in hand because we're under ten million dollars. So we have the ability to say, we had lost revenue of ten million dollars. So, we would, we would say through, to the feds, four point blah 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 million is just lost revenue. And then we keep it on our own books saying, okay, we want this project done, this project done, this project done. So, um, we, that's how we're going to probably address it, but Carrie's looking into it where we don't have to have it contracted by the end of this year, potentially, we're working on that through executive.
So how long do we have to spend it? Is there no requirement then, infinitely?
Twenty twenty-six, if you're reporting it as non-lost revenue, if you're reporting it as lost revenue, you have unlimited time. So, we're, we're looking into that.
Mr. Barkstrom?
Yeah, I was curious as to, uh, to some of the major contractors who want progress payments, I mean, like American Asphalt's been working half the summer. They have a week, they don't.
They just say, what's, here's your asphalt at the end of the year, write me a two million dollar check.
At the end of the year, they, no progress payments.
No, so you'll see, it, it usually happens, we see a big dip. The issue is though, we borrow the money in December to repay it, so you see the dip and it goes away, right? So we make a payment, comes back, we, we actually never, I don't want to say lose the cap.
I know they have weekly payroll to make.
Yeah.
Kind of wondering.
They finish projects throughout the summer, it's just the big ones that don't. Uh, and going back to the ARPA, we do have a spreadsheet that what we've allocated so far, what we've said we were going to allocate it to, um, that'll be going to executive, because there's a couple areas there that we want to reallocate um, from projects that didn't come to fruition or, um, we have projects that could be done with it. So, executive will be seeing that and the board coming up. Any other questions on cash? We're still receiving just over five percent on cash in hand, uh, which is really good. Sales tax, uh, we're a little bit behind last year, four percent, um, I haven't seen this month come in. It's been some ups and downs, uh, nothing extreme, uh, by the end of the year, we should, we'll be above our budget, but, uh, probably just about where we were last year. Stumpage, uh, you can see we're a hundred percent less than last year, so we've collected five hundred and three thousand out of the million. If you look though, historically, we budgeted like one point one million in two, twenty twenty-two, we only, we received one point four million. In twenty twenty-three, we budgeted one point two million and we received one point six million. This year, if we come in say at eight hundred or a million, you take the three year average and you're, you're above where you, you should be. Uh, we see contracts coming in just as strong as they have been, so we're not concerned, um, with that budgeted area.
Actually, I believe that the sale bid Jeff, wasn't the, one of the first ones that every property or every parcel?
One, yeah.
Well, all of them were originally bid on and then one backed out in the last.
Yeah.
After.
So there, there's people buying, we're not, they may not be as strong as they did two, three years ago, as in like a hundred thousand dollar contract is now coming in at ninety-five thousand, but we also only expect eighty, so we're still positive there. Tax delinquency, uh, this year, we're at two point four percent tax delinquency amount, um, out of our taxes. The biggest problem with looking at this as just a percentage is when one large company doesn't pay. So for example, uh, Lineite has a hundred thousand dollar tax bill and they don't pay. That adds up to, you know, point three or point four percent. If Nick doesn't pay his taxes at twenty-five hundred bucks, it takes, it takes a lot more of those little ones to equal what a big one does, so when you get one big factory or one big payer, uh, that's where the percentage sways quite a bit. Nothing out of the norm, um, we've had Lynn talk about it, there wasn't any like scary, oh my gosh, a whole bunch of people didn't pay or we're seeing any, anything different.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
On highest delinquency rates, Park Falls, Phillips and Village Apprentice. Falls, I assumed it's paper mill, Phillips, it's Lineite, Village Apprentice.
Couldn't even tell you. Takes one.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't know. And it might have just been late, um, who did we have? Oh, we had a payer that was late in Park Falls that ended up paying three days late and it was five thousand dollars, so you can assume it's a large payer. So that would have been on this list.
Okay.
I don't know, Apprentice, I couldn't tell you. I don't think who you just said out loud, but, I don't know, I, we can look at that, we can find that out. High cost placements, so we're higher than last year by thirty percent, but we're well below our average budget. Um, we're, we're doing pretty well there, but like I said, we've allocated some of those costs over to, uh, AODA high cost placements, because that's really what they were, they were behavioral health, mental health, um, costs. Uh, we will be addressing that during the budget time and then, like I said, hopefully getting more reimbursement based on some programs um, and reimbursable costs from the state. Any questions on the executive report?
Okay, we'll go under, uh. Item B for you, Mr. Administrator.
Sounds good, I, I'm not going to go through it all today, uh, we did go through it a little bit more detail at executive. This is a, a draft, where, uh, we brought it forward because we had a couple questions for the, the whole to be, to look in it. Um, so there's not a lot of detail of the assumptions and all the ups and downs. Um, we're still doing that internally, we'll get that to the next executive committee. Uh, some of the things we've included are three percent across the board wage increase. Um, we had some increase in health insurance, but we also had a pretty good reduction based on Taylor Family Clinic and our assumption of how they're going to affect our insurance. Uh, we've had some success, we, we've had three weeks, we had our first three weeks. Um, they had twenty-five people from the county go to Taylor Family, uh, and it cost the county about twenty-five hundred dollars when if they would have went to a regular healthcare provider, it'd been just over thirteen thousand. So, in three weeks, we saved a thou- or eleven thousand dollars on our health insurance, so we're, we're saying that'll be a big savings in the long run. Um, sales tax, we increased some, shared revenue, we increased some. Uh, we did motion to accept the, uh, new construction, net new construction, uh, levy which is seventy-seven thousand. We also got the shared revenue increase from the state, which is about forty-five thousand, forty-four thousand. Um, oh yeah, forty-four thousand two hundred and twenty, uh. So again, this isn't all the detail, but it's kind of where we're headed. Uh, the, the board, when we did the experiment on the debt level or the, the casino time, the chips, uh, there wasn't a lot of appetite to increase funding for roads, uh, so we're maintaining that three million or just over three million dollar resolution. Uh, there was appetite though for a third truck, uh, extra squad car, a couple other things that's in the packet. Uh, you can see percentage wise what people were kind of leaning on. However, this was probably the biggest discussion, well, hold on, so that's one thing, we're keep, we're maintaining, but we're also increasing by a million because that's what the last year's, uh, road construction was, was the issue. So that's, at the end, that's probably the biggest discussion point. Library services, it's three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, that's outside the normal budget or outside the normal levy that can go up or down. Bridge and Culver Aid is quite a bit more than last year at a hun- just under a hundred thousand. That would increase our total levy by one point three million dollars, um, with just one point one million of that being the, uh, the road construction that we approved prior year. The other area would be the bridge and culvert area, the library service and then net new construction and shared revenue. So shared revenue, net new constructions, a hundred and ten, libraries, some of that, blah blah. Uh, if you look at the percentage breakdown, operationally, we've increased by six point eight percent. That would be the levy, that'd be your net new construction, again, and your shared revenue. Library services went up one percent, bridge and culvert aid went up point three four percent, and our debt was up to nine point five nine percent. So the total levy increase would be eleven point eight two percent. Our equalized value went up just under nine percent, so that's where the effect comes in the most, um, when you look at the mill rate. The discussion that was had at executive was, we have two options going into the next year with our mill rate. We can rip the Band-Aid off, increase by a million dollars of debt, uh, which would be the fifteen cents per, per thousand on your home. Or we can separate that payment for debt out over two years and then you'd reduce your, your mill rate by eleven cents. So there's kind of a decision to be made, uh, executive had a lot of discussions, they felt it was better to just rip the Band-Aid off and go with the increase of point one five. Uh, however, we are per, going to produce a document, so last year, our mill rate went down by eighty cents. So, last year went down point eight zero, this year we're saying it's going to go up point one five, so we're still down over a two year period. We're going to produce that for the last couple years to show that we've actually, mill rate wise, we've been decreasing even though the levy collection or the levy rate, not levy rate, levy amount collected has gone out. So because you're spreading it out over more buildings, more value, the actual mill rate goes down. So if you built onto your house, you pay a little bit more, if you've done nothing, it, as long as your municipality didn't reevaluate, yours would go down last year by point eight, this year it would go up by point one five cents per thousand, so. that was probably the biggest discussion is what to do with debt, because that does make the biggest change in that fifteen cents.
And part of the discussion in doing it now, ripping the Band-Aid off, as you say, is interest savings.
Yeah.
You gotta pay it back in one way or the other.
Right. So it's about a twenty thousand dollar increase in cost and, and interest. If you make that payment over a two year process instead of a one year. So that's part of it was the interest cost. And then you're still going to have to do it next year, right? You're still going to increase that half a million next year. And I don't know what equalized value will do in the future. So it may be an increase next year. Whether you like it or not. We'll have more detail going for future. Some of the other hurdles we're seeing is we're working with Catkins right now. Deputy Hawn and myself have met with him a couple of times. They'll be proposing a new contract with quite a bit more in there. So we have to figure out where that's going to come out of the budget. There was something else that was, oh, there, there was some small ones, like Friends of Fred Smith has asked for an additional twenty five hundred dollars on their five thousand dollar contribution to the park that was put in there.
Thirty percent increase in library.
Yep, the library went up a hundred thousand dollars. That's in that number. That was based on requests from the libraries.
So, excuse me, did, so we went from the seventy percent to a hundred percent?
That's what he's got figured in the budget. We didn't go there yet.
Right.
And decided to do something different, but that's what he's figured for the budget.
Yeah, so.
The, the request from the libraries was at a hundred percent. We put it in at a hundred percent. We discussed that at the committee meeting to not change it at this time. So that can be lowered down to seventy percent.
Before the budget's over.
Correct. All right, it's been our, it was our highest net new construction in my tenure. So we're at one percent, meaning people are building on or building new. So that's, that's pretty good. That's above and beyond what the growth is. So that's good. There was, oh, the other two discussions we had, I think it was during the meeting, but I know it was brought up. We did not put funding in for the UW extension position, that grant writer position. So that was one thing the committee talked about, looking at going forward. And then also an economic development type position. The economic development type position, the discussion was had, should it be in this budget or should we continue to? We'll get, be getting an update on the carbon, carbon fiber, what is it called? Carbon credit money, which in that resolution, it still hasn't passed, but there is an allocation for economic development in that revenue stream. So do we try to put it in the levy or do we wait till we start to see money there?
So as you're working on this, do you want input directly from us to you and Kerry or do you want to go?
Yeah.
Direct to the executive committee? How, how would you like the input after we review this?
At this point, it's really, if you bring stuff up, we'll, we'll bring it to the executive committee based on like, if you said, oh, we want another dump truck, three hundred and, well, we'll find a price. We'll bring it to the executive saying that the board is interested in it. Then the executive would have to try to determine whether or not we have the room for it, which then it would come back to the board for full approval.
Skopish.
I don't know if I really want to bring this up, but I feel I probably have to because I'm on that board. Would you consider something for SEP? As an op- as an operating budget item? Annual?
Something to think about. I haven't.
Well, I'm going to throw it out there. I mean, it's, it's a service, it's a service that we need and I'm not sure what's going to happen. We got a lot of meetings with the EWD this week on various issues. And I, the funding is the problem. They keep reducing funding and, and they keep wanting you to do the same services. It doesn't work. So just, just thought I'd throw that out. Thank you.
Sure.
Do you want me to contact SEP to see what that level looks like or?
Let's, let us get through this week. If we're still alive at the end of the week, we'll, we'll let you know.
Can it to executive and we can.
Yeah, I can. Contact Skylar and.
Yeah.
And see what.
Yeah, she's the one to talk.
Yeah, what the request might be.
Mr. Hastings.
Did we get repaid the five thousand? Wasn't that?
Uh, that's not due till December, December.
Is that what it was?
I think it was December.
Okay.
December twenty five.
Yeah, I can't remember if it's December, July, July twenty five.
Never mind.
Anything else, Nick?
Equalized value turned out well again this year. We were above the state average. So that was good. That's the packet for the budget. It's, it's in there. If you look, we have the next three years of projects where we're thinking, whether it's the towers in there, I believe somewhere, portable radios, centralized tower, flooring, MDCs, triaxial trucks, all kinds of stuff. So far, a good budget, nothing, no major losses. We're being very conservative on our sales tax, stumpage, some of our other areas, which we've consistently done over the years. This isn't a bad thing. Highway is probably our biggest watch area just because we're starting to do some really big projects, which is a lot of in and a lot of out and it can, you can miss a lot there if you, if you're not paying attention. So we've been approving a lot of things at highway, whether it's projects or bigger projects. We just have to really watch what we're doing with our borrowing there and make sure we're covering it.
We thought the last guy liked to spend money. I think Roger did a darn good job.
Sarah's listening.
Anything else, Nick?
Uh, no. You want me to just do a general updates?
Sure.
I have continued to sit on the subcommittee, sub steering committee for UW extension negotiation. We've met with the university once already, very productive. So that was good to, to have. I, I don't know all their names, but it was the top five individuals. So it was Dean and then the next five individuals that run different areas of the, the UW extension. We met for almost three hours, lots of good conversation. I think we're on the same page. We just got to get some of the verbiage right. And what it is, is we're talking about the contract and the MOU that we signed between counties and the university when it comes just to processes and procedures. So we have another meeting, the twenty eighth or twenty ninth, I can't remember. It's at the end of the month. We set aside four hours. So we're, we're, we're dedicated to sit down and come up with something before the contracts come out going into the future. Like I said, positive experience, everybody's working together. A lot of it comes down to legal and verbiage. So there was one, I, we spent a half an hour on a sentence and it was just like, but this is what we're trying to say. And Legal's like, but you're not saying that. And so it was more of a, how are we interpreting a couple of words? So it, it, again, great, great conversation. We'll get there. Once that's completed, that's hopefully what we'll work off of going forward, whether it's just with our 4H position or any other additional positions that we, we have going forward. We are seeing across the north area, a reduction in UW extension program or funding. We're seeing a lot of counties kind of through attrition, not funding it going forward. So I don't know where that'll end up. That's those counties' issues, but we are seeing, seeing that happen. That was my major update.
Okay, thank you. Committee chair reports, administration, Mr. Wurco.
At our last meeting, we two, two subjects. Thank you. Gene didn't yell at me then. The first one was the, the changes that we made to the board manual, which we already dealt with. The other one was with a tailored family care clinic, which is up and running. Nick already explained all that. We have employees that are using it. So we're encouraged by that because the potential for major savings is, is there. So other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
At the fu- yeah.
Go ahead.
At the future admin meeting, they'll be setting the premiums for our health insurance, what we pay ourselves into that fund balance based on our, our budget. Yeah. Based on what we're currently budgeting for it. So that's how we've worked in the, the past. But the setting of the premiums probably won't happen for one more month, but we're, we're talking about the premiums. We'll be talking about our EAP program. Currently, we use a third party. We're looking to switch that third party to have better access to a product for our employees. And then there was one other thing, but it, it really all depends on how we budget. So it all works together and we got to time it, time it right. So.
Great, thank you. Executive, that'd be me. We had a meeting on eight fifteen. We heard the usual reports from the treasurer administrator, including the preliminary draft budget that we just looked at. We discussed negotiations with Catkins, but we're just going to leave that alone because we're still negotiating. There was obviously a lengthy discussion on bug tussle, but I think it was a very worthwhile one. And it resulted in the resolution being brought to the board today. And we also had a closed session to initially discuss the required annual administrators review. And I'm going to, after we commit, convene out of the committee of the whole, I'm going to recommend we do not do the closed session today for that review because at the executive committee, we, we talked about it. We want more input. And then at our next county board meeting, we'll do the review. And is there any questions regarding that?
Do you want to talk about the videoing or the meetings and putting them online?
Sure.
So we, we als- we also had a conversation at the executive committee because we've had some records requests for videos or just what happened at a meeting. We have the capability of recording them and then we've been sharing them on YouTube. So we have a specific page. So we'll share that with everybody. So if you want to go back and listen to something that happened at a meeting, you'd have access. We've, we've got one subscriber and like three views. So we're, we're doing good. We're, we're influencers now.
Is this video or just audio?
It, it's what you see up there. So video and audio.
Okay.
And it'll be all committees.
Huh?
All committees.
So we've been recording committee meetings.
And that's on that YouTube thing.
Yep. Well, I'll have Gene share that. We, we've been working on it. It's been a struggle. We're not influencers. Just trust me. Just trying to get it. And so we turned off all comments. We have to make it so people can't splice it and I don't know. We're lucky to have a new deputy that knows how to do some of that stuff.
Mr. Brecker.
Just a comment. I called into a highway committee one time and there was a delay in the audio on the phone. And then Health and Human Services had one last week and I used the WebEx connection and there is no delay there. Paul said that it was clear.
I noticed that too.
So if you're able to and you have to call into a meeting, if you can do the, the WebEx or the app, it definitely is a lot user friendly. Just a thought.
When I've got a call in, I try to time the timing of my answer when Gene asks for something. Because I'll even hear the delay on my end. It's like, oh boy, that really is far behind. So I'll try to approve it, you know, and try to say something ahead.
And I can attest to that too, from South Dakota, Badlands area. I, I called in on WebEx and it was perfect.
It's a long way for information to get.
A long way to get there, right? Yeah.
But yeah, I can show you what it looks like while you guys keep going, but.
So, so the discussion was the difference between actually calling and joining. Joining is going to give you a better.
Connection.
Yeah, connectivity.
And that you can get right off the website.
Correct. There's a join meeting button on the calendar on the county website.
Yeah, when I went on that, on that computer, it was, it was actually really good. The one, one time, I think. This spring, I was home with my son, but otherwise, when I call on the phone, there's definitely a different, like you said, a big leg.
Yeah. And I don't expect us to get a bunch of viewership because like, we kind of mimicked ours after Washington County. And like they have a hundred and fifty thousand and people that live in the community and they get like twenty views. So it's not like, like I said, we're not going to be big influencers anytime soon.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Fort Worth Parks, Mr. Hallstran.
So we did not have a meeting in August and, and we're going to have one, hopefully September the ninth, we requested. So we have, there's some of the property that we're taking that we need to have a discussion about whether we want to consider moving forward and owning that. So, so we did not have a meeting. I see in the back of your executive reports, there's a nice little thing that talks about the parks in there. First I seen it, but anyway, you can look at that. But so we didn't have a meeting. So.
Okay.
September ninth.
Thank you. Health and Human Services. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Paulcheck. Sure.
Uh, how are you coming along with the, the state on the Toscobia Trail maintenance?
I have not heard a word on it.
Okay. Is Joe still proceeding it?
He, yes, yes. Well, last time we met was in early July. So, yeah, I haven't really talked to Joe much since then.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, Mr. Wurco.
Yeah, Larry, I, you know, we have to be careful with that loan ATVs on the Toscobia year round because there's a lot of private land out there. And I know a few that are going to shut it down if they're allowed down there. So just an FYI.
Okay. Now we'll move on to Health and Human Services.
Yeah, Health and Human Services. We met on August fourteenth. We went through the usual beginnings and then we had subcommittee appointments. Again, we talked about that already about the Northern Representative for Council on Aging on the agenda for next meeting. The annual report was, we handed that out to all the members and told them, take it home, read it and everything. And then we will discuss it and no action is taken. It's just that we'll discuss it. There's no, we don't have to move it to, forward to the county board. Resolution for the crisis facility that was already passed. So thank you very much for that. Michelle Edwards had a, she went through a lot of the things that have happened, quarterly report, Sharpe's disposal, food security grant, they're working with youth organizations, the YMCA in Park Falls, using data from HHS to be selected for it. P, uh, PFOS grant, we have, we had one working in Emmer- Harmony area to test more homes and remedy the situation if they test positive at no cost to the homeowners. So yes, there was one that, that did test positive. So stay tuned. We'll let, let you know how that's going. The Wisconsin wins result, which is tobacco prevention and control. They had a compliance check and they checked sixteen establishments within our businesses within the area, within the county. Ten, there were ten that do not sell to youth. And there were two that were, were, and that's been moved on to law enforcement for action on that. Uh, let's see, moved down. The rest of them were just all reports that we went through for Asian disability, behavioral health, children and youth, all the way down to Sarah's report, our director, Sarah Soha. She gave agency updates, a brief presentation of the new hires, just talked about the board, board orientation review. And just so you know, that is open to anybody on the county board that you ever want to go to that. It just, I, I tout this all the time, that it's a good way for you to know what's going on with Health and Human Services. So when it comes to you for voting, you'll have an idea of what, what they're discussing and what's going on. You'll get to know maybe some of the acronyms. There are pages and pages. So there were four county board members. They were actually from Health and Human Services. And that was Wardco, Kopish, Baratka and myself. Next meeting is going to be September fourth. That will be in the afternoon at three thirty. And then we'll, we will have public participation at five o'clock. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Hastings.
Who determines what a mental health crisis is?
You'd have to talk about that to the pros. I, I, I don't think I have.
Yeah. So there's statutory requirements we have to go through and then we have a medical provider that would evaluate. And then it's through the court system also. So like, medical provider may say this is a mental health chapter fifty one, but we still have to go through the court system to say, did we do our due diligence to get to that point?
Okay.
Good question.
I just have a comment that the PFOS was brought up. That's where, where it's at and it's off of one eleven and a private residence, correct? And nobody's really sure where it came from or how it got there.
No, remember they talked about maybe DNR was looking at some, some of the groundwater, bringing that in. And then that question then came up too, because they said, well, they drilled another well and I, I think I. And then that question then came up too, because they said, well, they drilled another well. And I, I think I asked the question, well, how can you drill a well if the other one had PFOS? But I guess it has to do with the way the water runs underground. Pardon me?
Yeah, it could have been a hundred yards the other way, which is a different water source.
If the current well was twenty eight feet deep and they could have drilled to fifty five or sixty, you know, to get to a different aquifer level. You know, I mean, that's how that can be dictated. So.
So the county's working with that.
Lot of farm fields around this residence?
Uh, I believe you asked me that before and I I didn't, I did not know the answer to that because I know you talked about.
Because that would be a likely source.
Yeah. Reason why the question was brought up, at the time, we were wondering if it was like a fact, previous factory location or something like that, but it.
Right.
It's not an industrial.
It's usually chemicals, artificial chemicals. So like nitrogen or um, fertilizers or foam. So the biggest probably issue for cities was foam at airports. Um, that was a chemical that really had a lot of the PFOS. The next would be the farm fields with um, certain pesticides and uh, fertilizers. And then there's also just in products, the breakdown of certain products have PFOS. We've been lucky. We haven't had a lot of, this is our first one. So.
Cotton paper.
Yeah.
Is a, is one, or Teflon products.
Yeah, that's the breakdown stuff that.
You've mentioned also, Mr. Wurco, that that um, it's not something that's easy to find because you can't, what, smell it?
You can't smell it. You can't taste it. You can't see it.
Yeah.
So.
So is it really there?
Well.
Well, if they tested it and tested positive.
Yeah, but if you can't smell, you can't taste, you can't see it. How can you test it?
Well, you know, kind of like the tree falls.
Any other questions, Ms. Hodeck?
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to highway and transportation. Mr. Polczek.
This is a fairly lengthy report this month, so if anyone has to use the washroom before, suggest it's a good time to do that. Highway crew repaired a culvert on Highway one eleven and fixed washouts on State Highway eighty six, one oh two and County Highway YY from the big storm we had a while back. As well as repairing damages to shoulders of State Highway and County Trunk Highway roads from the storm. They routed and sealed twelve and a half lane miles of cracks on State Highway thirteen in Fife Field in Prentice. They have changed culvert on Hall Strand Road. We have been mowing and should have all five hundred and sixty six lane miles completed this week. The crew is continuing to change culverts on County Trunk C south of State Highway eighty six. We have hauled three inch gravel lift on County Trunk D for the pulverizing at Shawomingan Drive and paving has begun on County Trunk W. The shop, two freight liner chassis for an early twenty twenty five delivery have been ordered from Bauer Truck, from Bauer Truck. These trucks are configured to replace our aging county plow trucks. Two freight liner chassis for a scheduled late twenty twenty four delivery are currently at Universal Truck awaiting the plow truck build. These trucks are also configured to replace our aged county truck plows. Did we mention our county truck plows are getting aged? Truck forty six has been red tagged with frame and box hinge rust out issues. This truck would be put on the next auction. County V boxes are being prepped and repaired for the coming winter use. Airport. Been busy with mowing. They have cleaned off the sump pump covers. They have, I guess. Clearing out the approaches with bat wing mowers to keep things down. Dams. On June twenty fourth, we had a lightning strike at Weemers Dam. The lightning strike damaged a few items. We have had damage to the outlets on the dam, which have been corrected. We also had damage to our emissions monitoring system. Dave has been working with the company over the phone to fix it. We had first thought the damage was limited to our daughter board, whatever that is. I heard a motherboard. Well, this is the, this, this is the daughter anyhow, which runs the phone on the system. But after installing the new parts, it did not come back online. We are now waiting for a new main board to install. Hopefully this will remedy the problem. We also have a mandatory DNR inspection due at Prentice Dam this year. Morgan and Parmley engineers from Lady Smith won the bid for it and will be doing the inspection yet this year. One other event this year that may take place, Musser Lake Association is doing a weed survey that they are hoping will result in a winter drawdown to freeze out thick weeds in a shallow area of the lake. We are waiting to hear if the DNR will allow it or not. And if so, what amount of drawdown will be prescribed? As soon as we get an answer, we will put it to a public announcement to say when and how much the flowage will be lowered. Other than that, mowing and other upkeep at the dams this summer and daily monitoring, plenty of rain has kept full pool at all lakes and much easier. Now for page two. Our next meeting is September twelfth. Are there any questions?
Very entertaining.
Thank you.
Hey, moving along. Land use and UW extension. Mr. Berkstrom.
The committee met on July eighteenth zoning. There was, uh, one supervisor has received uh, complaints relative to short term rentals and that's not unusual. Uh, by statute, we cannot deny permits, only impose certain conditions. Other counties struggle with the same thing. Uh, we're gonna have that discussion placed on uh, future agendas, talk about it. We approved two conditional use permits, one in the town of Worcester, one in the town of Spirit. We approved one land, land division in the town of Fife Field. There were, there are six parcels that are uh, tax delinquent and uh, in the final processes of REM and they'll be eventually sold. Uh, land conservation, three bids were received for Snowmobile Bridge construction. The lowest bidder was approved. And one other bridge is being planned for next year. UW extension, uh, 4H summer camps went well. Plans are being made to uh, restart the reality day fair at the schools. It was discontinued because of COVID. And uh, Art Lurch has uh, announced that his, his retirement later in this year. And the plans are to fill that position. Questions?
Alan, um, where are the Snowmobile Bridges approved for?
That would be a.
Joe question?
A lot.
Or eh?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Evan?
Evan question.
Evan?
Over there. So I'll ask Evan. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll find out from uh, from Evan. There's a, if we don't have any snow like we did last year, that's a problem.
And there's no rush. There's no further questions for Mr. Berkstrom. We'll move on to law enforcement. Mr. Polczek.
Mr. Chairman, we haven't had a, a meeting uh, since our last meeting. Uh, there will, will be one scheduled sometime in September forthcoming. Nick, do you have anything to add?
Uh, we just had the K nine luncheon. Turned out really well. A lot of community members. We do a lunch uh, for our employees with that. Uh, otherwise, it's been pretty quiet over in law enforcement right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Hodeck?
Only because it's that time of the year and I've been in that position for many years, I I certainly would like to wish Michelle and her committee good luck with the fair this year and that she has a successful one and that she certainly has some good fair weather.
And just a reminder with that, on Thursday night, we pay for, the county pays for employees and or board members and up to four household members uh, to get into the fair for free, but it's Thursday night. You also get free ice cream at the 4H, whatever it is.
But you need to pay the five dollars to ride the rides.
Right. If you, if you have children or individuals that want to ride the rides, it's an additional five dollars, I think, whatever. Yes, I've heard several do that because they get a you get five dollars off.
Wonder if my uh, teacher has any extras.
I also heard that there's gonna be a hotter balloon there.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be blowing on it?
So I'm gonna stand under it. There had, that was a nice thing with the, the fair. They did a lot of extra stuff on Thursday night, which um, I don't know if the school approved it last night, but I, okay, so I went to the school last night to let them know how we handle that. So they're also doing an employee night at the fair. So hopefully that'll be extra two, three hundred people that um, come to the fair that normally don't on a Thursday night.
And I'll say thank you all, committee members from the ARPA funds that were given to the playground. The new playground opened last week, Wednesday down at the park. There was probably
Great.
I don't know, seventy five to a hundred in attendance and whatnot. Um, there was lots of cheering and wooing and having fun. So it was. It was uh, not mooing, wooing. Uh, it was uh, it's great to have it open. We're still just uh, roughly ten thousand short on funds, I mean, for what we have. Um, but we're gonna continue to get that done here in the short term. So, but it's nice to have that project done and and be opened. I know on Saturday at Phillips on Tap, I didn't realize that many children could fit in such a small area.
Yeah, it was well, you was well.
Thank God, because I couldn't imagine where they would have went with the old playground.
Yeah, yeah. Nice job.
I just wanted to mention that along with that lightning damage out on Weemers Dam, there was also pretty extensive damage to the law enforcement building. A lot of electrical stuff was zapped. There was also some damage out at Solberg Lake. One of the playground structures was damaged. So those are all in the works of being repaired.
Wow.
Through insurance.
For insurance.
Yeah. And then on the board, this is our YouTube channel, Surprise County, Wisconsin, comma, government. Uh, right now we have four total videos. Uh, Transportation Coordination Committee has zero views. We have three views on the Board of Supervisors from the last time we did the bug tussle stuff. We have one subscriber, so. And that subscribes me and that's. So Gene will send out the link. So if you ever want to see what's happening at a committee meeting, this would be after the fact. Usually it's twenty four hours. Depending on our availability of staff.
And we'll have that link on the county website.
That also.
Okay. We're gonna convene out of the committee of the whole. As stated earlier, the closed session is gonna be, is it laid on the table or postponed till next meeting? And the date of the next meeting for the board is September seventeenth at this time, nine AM. There's nothing else. Mr. Kopish.
If you want.
It's just not discussed and we'll put it on the next.
It'll just go in the minutes as um, closed session was not needed for future meeting.
Mr. Bracken.
Can I ask what additional information we're looking for? Um, that you mentioned earlier about the closed session item?
Okay, well, at our executive committee, we went into closed session and uh, the committee members are gonna, they saw the uh, the, the template for the review for the first time, basically. So they're gonna fill it out and give comments at the committee level. And then we're gonna, I'm gonna, they're gonna be handed into me. I'm gonna filter them, you know, and just put general statements by each item. And then we'll bring that to the board at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Does that make sense? Anything else? Hearing nothing else, I hereby adjourn this meeting.